Hi, thank you. I want to welcome everybody here and the audience and to everyone that's online for the August 5th, 2025 Town Council Workshop at 5:30 PM. We are going to start today with just a quick roll call. Oh, and by the way, you know, if you're joining us by Teams, you're more than welcome to raise your hand if you have any questions. If you can't get on Teams, the phone number is 469-708-0487 and the meeting ID is 556-348 and then 100 pound. And I'm going to start with a call to order. I'll start to my left and I'll start with Ann Guest.
Present.
Charity Claire.
Present.
Ken Ferrenton.
Present.
And Vince Palange.
Present.
And Mike Johnson, present as well. So today we're going to go over the workshop and we've got some sort of a revised budget that I am actually going to have Mike Foley kick it off and go over the material.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a recap of the budget presentation that I did last week with some changes that the Town Council had suggested I make, or not last week, last month. Some changes that the Town Council had suggested be made, but I'll go through that presentation. And we also have some updated figures from the School Department and what the impact is on the tax rate. But I'll just recap, as part of the June election, the budget was rejected, or four articles, budget articles were rejected and require an in-person town meeting per the Town Charter. The first one, which is Article III, which encompasses the main budget and the various Town Council, Town Departments. Article IV, which is Town Council Compensation. Article VI, which is the transfer of TIF funds ultimately to support our Economic Development Department. And Article XIV, which was for borrowing. And so just to comment on some of the highlights of adjustments that I made in the budget that I had presented to you at the beginning of the July following the vote in June. We reduced spending by $676,000 from previously proposed, which was a reduction of $491,000 for fiscal year '25. It eliminated any proposed wage scale and market adjustments and it replaced it with a 3% COLA. And actually, the COLA is in effect on 7.1, not 9.125. That was some guidance that the Council had asked to have that be effective, 7.1. So that's been updated in the budget figures. We eliminated any reference or joining of the main public employees retirement system. We had proposed initially to increase Town Office working hours to 40 hours and restore the Friday hours from 8 to 12. But based on some guidance from the Town Council, they had asked to put it to the 37 and a half hours, which we had budgeted before. The Town Council was open 36 hours, but we had a buffer in there of an hour and a half for any time when the employee arrives early to get ready for the opening and stays late to close. So the Town Council had recommended that we return it back to 37 and a half hours and craft a schedule that allowed us to be open on Fridays. And so we're still in the process of crafting that schedule. And once we're able to resolve the budget, we'll work to communicate the changed hours and the introduction of Friday hours later in the year. We reduced annual paving by $200,000 due to favorable pricing received from bids. And we removed any borrowing for refinancing capital needs as well as made reductions to the Economic Development Budget and transfer from TIFs. So since our last meeting in July, the Council, the only guidance they had provided was the one I mentioned of reduce Town Office staff to 37.5 hours from 40 and then propose a payoff of eligible debt, outstanding debt using the Town's unassigned fund balance. And so one of the things I wanted to go over, and I apologize, I forgot to hand this out. So I had talked about this initially when we first presented the budget in the spring because we hadn't had any discussions about fund balance. In the revised budget, I wanted to, since that was considered, wanted to go over that. And so the Town's fund balance, you base, it's a, the Town Charter requires it to be 25% or three twelfths is the maximum requirement that the Town has for the unassigned fund balance. And the minimum is two twelfths or 17% per the Charter. And so based on our fiscal year '25 tax commitment of $21,249,241, that would mean we would have to have the max we should have is $5,312,000 or the minimum of $3,527,000. So per the fiscal year '23 audit, which when we originally were discussing the budget in the spring, that audit had not been completed, but it's been completed and presented to the Town Council. And that had an unassigned fund balance per the fiscal year '23 audit of $7,938,583, which is 37.4% per the Charter requirement. So we have excess, a significant excess of fund balance. And as I've talked about over the years, that was a cause by a combination of factors, underbudgeting in revenues, which the Town had received for a number of years straight, as well as under-spending and expenditures. So there was spend, expenditures that were proposed to be spent that weren't spent. And so a combination of those two factors made multiple years of contributions to fund balance, making it fairly healthy. So as part of the fiscal year '24 budget, which is currently unaudited, there was transfers that were proposed as part of that budget that were approved by the voters. And then anything that's remaining in the fiscal year '24 budget based on the unaudited figures, we're estimating a contribution from fiscal year '24 of 1,600 and approximately 1,636,000. So that will add to the balance. And then in fiscal year '25, which the budget, we're in the process of closing out right now. Typically municipal fiscal years takes a couple of months to close them out for us to receive all the bills for services that were incurred or expenses that were incurred during the fiscal year. Right now, based on the report that I provided to the Town Council as part of the Town Manager's Report in the Town Council Agenda, we're only estimated to use about $40,000 in funds for fiscal year '25 when we had budgeted to use $1 million. So favorable spending, not spending some of the expenditures, as well as favorable revenues allowed us to recognize that and not need to use what we actually budgeted for. We're fairly hopeful and confident that the number will even be closer to zero. If not, there'll be a slight contribution once all the revenues get reconciled and all the expenditures get reconciled. So that's a very, very rough estimate because we haven't closed out fiscal year '25. And then in fiscal year '26, the proposed transfers, three of which, or two of which were approved by the voters, which was, or three, three of which were approved by the voters, which was a usage of $750,000 to support the budget, which is essentially to offset the tax rate. And that was a step down from the million that we had proposed in fiscal year '25. And this was something that existed prior to my arrival. So I'm helping to, I'm developing a plan to step that down and the Council had previously agreed to that. So that number was approved by the voters in June. And then the other amount was a transfer of $500,000 for the land acquisition fund, which was approved by the voters in June. And then the last one was the $1 million transfer into the Capital Reserve Fund. And so one of the things that we've talked about, and we'll talk about it a little bit further down, but with the need, with the transfer approved for the Capital Reserve Fund, it eliminated the need for borrowing to be able to support the budget. And then, as discussed at the last Town Council Workshop regarding the budget, the Council had asked me to look into paying off the eligible debt that we were able to be, that's be able to be paid off, which is the bond that was taken out to support the improvements here at this facility for the septic system and improvements to recreation facilities, as well as a bond that was taken out to purchase the Gateway Property, which is across, about across the street here from Town Office. And so those had payments remaining and the proposal was to pay off those because they're eligible to be paid off. Most municipal bonds aren't eligible to be paid off. These are more considered like loans and they were from our banking institution partner, Andrusgoggin Savings Bank. They, specifically the penal complex one had a high interest rate in the sixes. And so one of the reasons I had proposed to refinance it was to get a more favorable interest rate and stretch the term out to the, to a closer length of the actual improvement that took place. But that was rejected by the voters and we've come up with this new concept of paying off the debt of about $1.1 million. And so if that's paid off, that would, that would include transfers of about $3,350,000 for fiscal year '26, which with those figures, we would still have $6,100, about $6,184,000 remaining in the fund balance, which is 29.1% of the actual Charter requirement. And so I showed you on the sheet that I handed out the forecast of the step down in future budget years in fiscal year '27 and fiscal year '28 of reducing the 750,000 to 500,000 and the 500,000 to 250. And then eventually we wouldn't rely upon the fund balance to help offset the budget anymore. And if those, if everything shakes out as it should, that forecast still shows us at about a 25% fund balance, which is the max of where we should be. And so number of years, it's unfortunate to say it this way, but for a number of years, members of the community were overtaxed. And so we've been working to try to balance that and essentially return that money to the taxpayers by using it for things such as capital, debt reduction and offsetting the tax rate. And that's typically what you're able to do with those fund balances. So I wanted to go over that as.
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think this has come up from a few people. You know, what are the consequences of, you know, is there fines? Is there a penalty for being over this percentage? How does that work?
So it's, it's the, it's the Town Council's or the Town's Charter, which is essentially the Town's Constitution. And there's no violation structure that's in place for that. So it's the Town Council's obligation as the legislative body for the Town to try to bring the Town into compliance for those. And that's what I propose is to help the Town Council come into compliance of those. So it is, it is a fluid number because you, budgets are our best guesstimate of what we're going to spend throughout the year. Sometimes we don't spend all that and sometimes we do spend all that and maybe might spend more if there's an emergency or an unexpected situation that may happen. And that's primarily the purpose of fund balances is to deal with emergencies or unexpected situations. And so there is no consequence, but it's your obligation as the legislative body to try to bring it into compliance and that's what we've been trying to do.
Okay. And then if I'm reading this correctly, it's 3.4, 3.35 million that we're going to be able to use next year towards the budget. Is that correct? Is that the way I'm reading it?
Yeah, so 3.35, $3,350,000, which includes what the voters approved, the 750,000 to offset the budget, to help offset the tax rate, 500,000 into the land acquisition fund and $1 million into the Capital Reserve Fund. Those three were approved by the voters. As part of the suggestion from the last Town Council meeting was to consider the debt payoff, which we would consider a replacement to Article 14, which was rejected. And that's $1,100,000. So that would, that's, these are all one-time expenses, which is a more appropriate thing to do for use of remaining funds like that rather than support ongoing expenses.
Yeah, I have one question. On the, on the Andrusgoggin loan, I know when we talked about, we were talking about the 6% was like 8.39 or whatever it was, something like that. What were the other ones? Or was it all in one loan that was the amount you're writing off?
The 1.1 million is the two, is the paying off the two loans.
There's two loans. What, you know, roughly.
I think the one for the, there's two, there was two payments left. And I think that interest rate was about 3%. It was financed before that other project. And it was a five-year loan that had, that had some, that had two payments left.
It only has two payments left.
Yeah, there's two payments left. But if we, if we don't use this to pay them off, then those need to be returned to the budget.
Sure, okay, no, that's fine.
So we would have to raise taxes.
Yeah, obviously normally it's a low rate, but we only have two payments. It makes sense. So, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So that's, I just wanted to recap the fund balance because we didn't talk about that at the last meeting and that was a suggestion that the Council asked to consider. So that proposal to pay off that debt is reflected in the budgetary numbers in the draft warrant articles, which were provided to you this evening as a reduction in the debt service. So basically now the revised budget, the final adjustments we made, the revised budgets, $825,011 less than the proposed budget, which was voted on by the voters of the original proposed budget. Administration is $285,000 less, which includes revised wages, taxes and benefits. Library and Recreation was about $72,000, which was revised wages and some other minor changes that we made to make the budget more palatable. Public Safety was about $59,000, which was, excuse me, some revised wages as well as some other items that we could make sacrifices in. Public Works was $349,000 reduction, which was revised wages and paving and some other small items. We continue to budget $0 for capital, to raise for capital as we're going to use existing and new capital, and the new Capital Reserve Fund for any outstanding capital items. And then based on the original proposed budget, we had reduced revenue, estimated revenue figures by two, about 277,000 based on some adjusted forecasts. And so I won't read every number on this spreadsheet here, but so the total budget for fiscal year '26, the proposed revised budget for administration, which includes administration in general, human resources, code enforcement and planning, economic development, assessing general assistance, communications, IT and elections. The proposed budget that was voted on was $4,490,000 and we've revised it to $4,205,000, which is a total of about a $547,000 reduction from fiscal year '25 or an 11.5% change. Library and Recreation, the original proposed budget that was voted on was $988,000 and that's been reduced to $916,000, which is about a $22,000 reduction or 2.4% from fiscal year '25. Public Safety is, was originally proposed to be $2,558,000 and the revised budget was, is $2,499,000, which is an increase of $323,000 or 14.8%. And that's primarily driven by a collective bargaining agreement that has wage adjustments for our public safety personnel. In Public Works, the original proposed budget was $4,509,000. With the revisions that we put together, it's $4,160,000, which is about a $38,000 increase or 0.9% increase over fiscal year '25. And then for debt service, it was originally proposed to be $1,430,000. That was also with our refinance. Based on the suggestion that we use the fund balance to pay off, that's been reduced in the revised budget to $798,000 or a reduction of $422,000, which is a 34.6% reduction over fiscal year '25. And so that brings a total budget, revised budget of $12,578,000, which is roughly $825,000 less than fiscal year '25 or 6.2%. And so I just wanted to show the percentages of what the municipal budget makes up. 33% of it is administration and that was the departments I mentioned earlier. And then also 33% of it supports Public Works. And then the next big piece is Public Safety at 20%, Library and Recreation at 7% and Debt Service at 6%. And then this next spreadsheet, I wanted to give a breakdown of what every dollar, and it's, it's hard to read these numbers from the screen. But I just want to show for the total dollar that a taxpayer in the Town of Gray spends, 65 cents of that dollar goes to support schools. 20 cents of that dollar goes to support the administration. 19 cents of that dollar goes to support Public Works. 12 cents of that dollar goes to support Public Safety. 5 cents of the dollar supports county government. 4 cents of a dollar supports tax increment financing. 4 cents supports library and recreation and 4 cents supports debt service. So this kind of gives you a little, little bit of a breakdown of what each portion kind of costs a resident per dollar.
What's the administration number?
It's 20 cents. And then so with that, we take all the numbers in the aggregated budget and the municipal general fund budget that was originally proposed was $13,588. It's now $12,578,000, which is roughly $825,000 reduction in spending. But with the overlay that we had that was in place as part of the revaluation, it's slightly more and those numbers will shake out later on. For tax increment financing, there's no change for school. We did receive the final numbers recently from the school. So the support school, the original school budget that had been proposed was $14,312,622. And the revision that was just voted on at the joint town meeting, which in this number also includes their share of adult education. That total is $14,596,800, which is an increase of $1,422,968 or 11%. And then the county budget does, which we haven't made any adjustments. That was what was provided in the original budget of $1,35,797,000, which is about a $60,000 increase or a 6.1% change. And those are all totaled up and I'll go through the other figures to get to the tax rate. For non-property tax revenue, as I mentioned, we made a slight adjustment. The original fiscal year '26 budget was $7,421,687 and we've revised that to $7,144,408, which is a reduction, slight reduction of about $123,000 over fiscal year '25. And then this is the, the total estimated tax needs for the municipal portion of the budget, which makes a, once you add up all those numbers, the municipal portion of the tax needs is $5,433,592. And with school, the total tax needs, we went over that number. And then with county, the total tax needs, we just mentioned that, where that gives us a total tax needs for, to support the entire community, which is the Town Municipal Budget and the School Budget of $21,471,238, which is a slight reduction of $221,000 or almost $222,000, which is one, I'm sorry, a slight increase, which is a 1% increase of about $222,000 over fiscal year '25. And I know it's confusing because we've got three different budgets we're kind of talking about when we would normally talk about just two. So that translates into a municipal tax rate. That municipal tax rate originally was proposed to be $2.79 for municipal portion. And now that's, as part of the revised changes, that's been reduced to $2.46, which is a 48 cent reduction in the municipal portion of the tax rate or a reduction of 16.3%. There's no change to tax increment financing. For school, the original proposed budget would have been $6.48 increase. With the revised budget they have, it's now an increase of $6.37, $6.37, which is a 48 cent increase over fiscal year '25 or about 10.1%. And then for county, it still remains a 47 cent increase in the tax rate or about 2 cents or 5.3%. With that, all the numbers shake out as originally proposed, the total tax rate would have been $10 million, I'm sorry, $10.17. And the revised tax rate now with the revised budget is $9.72, which is only a 2 cent increase over fiscal year '25 or 0.2%. So the average homeowner in Gray, which is a home, the average home is assessed at $476,000. In fiscal year '26, based on the proposed budgets, they pay $6 million, I'm sorry, $4,627.41, which is $10.22 more than last year. Or again, a 0.2% increase. And that's factoring in the municipal and the school. And then I did want to touch on the capital projects. We talked about that in various aspects of the budget. And so with that, we, one of the tank, one of the items that I spoke to last time is the Public Works fuel tanks. We had proposed to defer those because we had initially received a test that, that indicated they may be failing. We've done some subsequent tests that have indicated they're not failing and we plan to have some additional tests that indicate that. We knew that they had approximately three to five years left of life in those tanks. But when we had that one test that went bad, we began to plan for those. But we, we deferred it for now. But all the other capital projects, we plan to move forward with and they, they add up to be a lot less than what we had originally proposed. And with the million dollars set aside, that the voters set aside into the Capital Reserve Fund, we're able to cover those. And should we have to reconsider the fuel tanks if they do actual fail between now and the next budget cycle, we have available reserve funds to be able to make those, to make those replacements. But we've done a lot of due diligence on that and we're fairly confident that we're able to continue using the ones that we have for a little bit longer. We have pursued grant opportunities to replace those and other things and those just haven't panned out to be able to support that initiative. And so given that they're not required to be replaced at the moment, we figured that we, it would be, the responsible thing would be to defer those for now. And then so where have we come from? The proposed budget, original proposed budget decreased the municipal portion of the tax rate by 15 cents and now we're reducing it by 48 cents. And that decrease ironically covers the entire increase of the school portion. So that helps to offset that. And we did this with various spending adjustments that I've kind of gone through earlier and, and that was a significant reduction to the municipal tax rate. And where do we go from here? The recommended proposed revised budget and warrant articles have been provided for you as part of the workshop and are scheduled to be voted on as part of the Town Council meeting. If the Town Council wishes to make any further adjustments to the budget today, we can update the warrant articles for the Town Council meeting. Just ask that you give us a few minutes to make those calculations. In discussions with the Town Council Chair, we worked to try to schedule the open floor town meeting to take place on September 9th to ensure that as many people as possible are able to attend. And so if we made any potential further cuts, we could consider employees and benefits or services to make any further reductions to the budget. And then we could make further adjustments to the budget if we use more fund balance. But I think what we've come up with and what's been suggested is a, is a good use of fund balance for now. And then I don't know if the Town Council has any other recommendations. I know there was some suggestions that some individual Town Councils that had that they may want to present this evening and I'll be happy to speak to as many of them as possible. A number of our department heads are here this evening to maybe speak to something more specifically. Not all of them are here, but we'll, we'll do our best to respond to any questions or concerns the Council may have. That's all I had to present so far.
Thank you, Mike. A couple of things, if you could do me a favor. I would like you to explain, because I don't think all of us understand how that open floor meeting will go on 9/9. I think it's really important that everyone understands what happens at that point, how it goes. You know, is it, you know, is it a blind vote? You know, what happens if it fails? If you could just take a minute and explain that, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So an open floor town meeting is similar to what a lot of municipalities have, a lot of smaller municipalities have in Maine, where they vote on their budget on an annual basis via an open floor town meeting. Gray once had that. I'm not sure exactly when. It was more recently. But Gray once had that where on an annual basis, and the best example is the Town of New Gloucester. They gather in May-ish either on a weeknight or a weekend. New Gloucester, they gather in May-ish either on a weeknight or a weekend. And they go over all the warrant articles that we essentially vote on by referendum during the referendum town meeting. So they would go, and each one of those items would be considered, we'd have to select a moderator to moderate the town meeting. And they would, there would then be the opportunity, when they got to each warrant article, for questions to be asked, for proposals to be made. And the moderator would entertain and talk about all those. And then people would be allowed to vote on those by show of hands. Sometimes they may request a secret ballot vote on those, and that's possible. And the moderator would talk about whether or not that would happen. But if there's a majority in favor, then most of the time it moves forward. And the most recent example is that if anyone attended the school budget joint town meeting for MSAD 15, those, similar process to that. The only thing that is different than a normal one or that one is we are just taking, considering the four articles that failed. So the remaining articles were approved by the voters and the charter requires that only the articles that failed be considered. This may be different than in years past, I think, for the fiscal year '24 budget, which happened in the summer of '23. The town had to consider all the articles because there was an article that failed, which was considered LD1, which is an old, an old state mandate that was removed, that basically encompassed the entire budget and why all the articles needed to be revisited. Where in this case, that didn't apply and the town only needs to visit the articles that failed.
And then the other question I had, thank you, Mike, was on the debt services. We've got $798,000 we still have in debt after we do what we're going to do. You know, can you give me just a brief idea of what is in there? Is there anything in there that we could pay off?
So like I mentioned, let me just bring up the list so I have the list of what, which ones are which. So in 2017, the town incurred debt to support, I believe, the renovation of this facility, the Public Works facility and the transfer station. And so that was, I don't know what the original amount of the debt is, but there is roughly, roughly almost $1.5 million remaining in debt to be paid on that bond. And then in 2018, the town incurred a bond for equipment and facilities. And that has about, let me see, about, almost $3 million of remaining debt to be paid. There is a significant step down in fiscal year '30 because they financed some equipment for that. So in fiscal year '30, that equipment could only be financed for, I think, a 12-year timeframe. That's a number of dump trucks and stuff we have at the Public Works. I've mentioned before in previous budget meetings, financing equipment like that on a long-term basis isn't the wisest thing. So that was something that had happened in 2018 and not anything I would have recommended. But there were some facilities improvements as well that took place then as well. And so those two bonds are, they're typical municipal bonds in that they're investments that are sold for people to invest in. And you do not have the ability to pay those off early. They, I haven't looked at the terms of those bonds. Usually sometimes at a midway point in them, sometimes there's what's called a, it's called refunding, but the average person would call it refinancing, where you have the ability to refinance said bonds if the interest rate was poor or things of that nature. I think in these ones, the interest rate at the time was probably around 3 percent. I don't know exactly. And then the other bonds that the town had was the Gateway Bond, which I mentioned, the Pendle and Manual Arts Bond, which was this complex. And those could be eliminated, resulting in the only remaining debt payments are those two bonds that I mentioned from 2017 and 2018.
Okay, so it says in here that debt services down to 798,000. So that is part of that 4.5, is that what that is? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's what, those would be the payments, the annual payments associated with those two bonds, the 2017 bond and the 2018 bond.
So that roughly 800,000 is just those two bonds?
Yeah, those two, so in fiscal year '26, it's the 700 and the 700,000, 700 change that you mentioned.
All right. And just a side note, if we can look at, if there's anything we can do about getting, you know, even if we can pay them off early with a little penalty or something, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, I can, I can look at the terms of those bonds and check with legal counsel to see if that's possible. I don't believe it is.
I'd like you, Mike, I don't think it's ever prudent to borrow money to buy vehicles that are going to be outdated before the bonds are paid off, but all right. Do I have questions?
Yeah, I have, there's a few things I'd like to go over in reference to the FY '26 budget spreadsheet dated 7/15, which is the 2057 lines that goes through the entire town, looking to request the following adjustments. Basically, each row number that is stated will correlate to that specific item on the spreadsheet that was put forward. After the row number stated, the item is going to be stated, followed by the adjusted amount being requested. And I was hoping that we could just simply do a show of hands by who would be in favor of that adjustment or who would not, and we could just tally those?
Is there a discussion on that? I would like to hear the impact of some of these proposed cuts because I think some, in some cases, they're substantial. And I think that, you know, there has been no public discussion about where those cuts came from or what the impact would be. And I think it's important for the people here tonight to hear about what's intended and how that would harm, you know, harm or affect the town.
Well, I guess I can put it in the simplest of terms. The requests that we're looking to do are going to affect no jobs. And they're going to ultimately affect no services. They're just adjustments within.
But before we go, I guess my question would be, if it comes up and we have a question on it, can we discuss it then? If something he proposes, how would you like to do it?
Yeah, I would, I have questions on a lot of them. So I plan to question a lot of them.
You know, so I mean, I think, you know, to your point, if you want to bring it up, you know, discuss it and vote on it, I'm fine with that.
So this, to be clear, this is nothing that the voters have seen, right? This is something, is this what you sent us just this afternoon at about 4 o'clock?
Yeah, that's something that actually, Mike and I had gone back and forth. It's something I think that was made, I would assume made available for anybody that, that 7/15.
It was a document that you shared with me of adjustments that you were going to make?
No, I'm talking about the big one that you sent me.
Oh, so the spreadsheet that Council Plangi is mentioning is a spreadsheet that anybody could download and export the data from the ClearGov portion of the website. And so it's essentially the raw budget data that I exported and shared with him. And anybody would have access to that. And I shared those documents with the entire town council shortly after he had requested that.
Right.
And so it's, I provided a budget book to everyone, which has, you know, the line item detail for each department and the requests. And that book has been published online as well as the ClearGov information. And so what that other thing shows is breakdowns, if we itemize, like under, say, computer equipment as an example, if we itemize what each computer equipment we were purchasing below the computer equipment line, it shows that detail. Where in the past, that detail isn't published in the normal budget book. It's just, it shows as computer equipment X.
Right.
And here's what that is. But that level of detail is available on our ClearGov website.
Right. And thank you for that. But my point is that there has been no public discussion about the cuts that Vince is proposing.
Yeah, so the spreadsheet I think that he's referring to, if it's the last one that he shared with me, it's budget adjustments that he's recommending.
Right. And I just saw it this afternoon at 4 o'clock and have not had a chance to digest it myself.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's something the council is supportive or not. But they were shared with me and I shared them with department heads to talk about the impacts and those. And so department heads have been made aware, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything I was proposing.
Sure. Yeah, I thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people understood why, where I was coming from on this because I've had no prior information about some of these. I mean, I did get something shared last week that I did, you know, look over and stuff, but there's been no opportunity to discuss these publicly. I'm just interested in transparency.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I'm with you with transparency. So I'm wondering, Mike, if this makes the most sense. Is it, what if we go through everything tonight? We vote on it. We vote on whether we want to make these cuts or not, okay? And then, or do you want to wait until next week, give everyone a chance to look at them and adjust them? Because if we have a quick meeting next week and we approve this budget, that would give us more than enough time still by 9/9, right? Is that correct? I'd rather do it smarter, to be honest with you. What I think makes the most sense, and if you guys are okay with that, is why don't we go through the items that you're looking to cut? Give everyone a chance to add those numbers up and then gather their questions, if they have any. And next week, we'll vote whether we're going to cut them or not, if that's fair. Is that, does that work for you guys?
Fine by me.
Fine by me.
Does that work? Yes.
If I may suggest, if you get through this process and no adjustments are made or small adjustments are made, we can make the adjustments to the warrants tonight and it could be voted on tonight if there's no.
That's fine, but I think Ann has, and I actually agree with her. I, you know, I think that it makes sense to, you know, look at these and, you know, because I have looked at it real quick and I don't think it's going to be something. And I agree with her, it's something she's going to be ready to vote on tonight if, that's up to you. Well, let's just go through it and then we'll see where we're at. But thank you, Mike.
All right, so how would you like to proceed then?
If you just want to go through one at a time, we'll talk about it and then we'll write down the number. And then if you can give us, I have not seen this other than what, we talked about roughly last week. So I was in a meeting until I left. If it's something you sent to me, I have not looked at it yet, to be fair.
How about we go through it?
Okay.
And then after we go through it, we can send that another updated or anything list out to everybody to go through. And then you can make the adjustments and then next week we can come in to do whatever we want with it. And that way, Ann has time, everybody else has time to go through it.
I think that's more fair, to be honest with you. I don't want someone to make a decision on something that they don't know anything about. I just, if that's okay.
Does that work for you, Ann?
Yeah, it sounds like there's been a lot of conversations that I've been part of. I don't know how those were happening, whether they were in small group meetings or individually or what. But yeah, I think it deserves more time. And I mean, I'm not willing to hold the process up any further. But I think that, I disagree with you that, based on a little I've seen, that there will be impact, perhaps not to individual positions, but certainly to things like the library budget or to the economic development budget, things that I've, you know, things that I've worked really hard on. So I, you know, it's going to take a little time to absorb, but.
Absolutely. And there have been obviously some individual conversations, but as you know, no more than two of us can get together at once. So there have been no group conversations on this.
Good to hear. All right, let's go.
All right. So I'm just going to read through them. So again, it's going to correlate to the spreadsheet we discussed, Mike?
Sure. Is it the one from the last time you sent?
Yeah, I'm just going over this, I'm going, I'm talking about the master spreadsheet, the '26 revised, 7/15. I'm just picking the rows off of that one.
Okay. And that was the spreadsheet you sent me last week?
It's probably been changed, but it's off your spreadsheet that you sent me. So when I give you a row number, and I'll give you a hard copy.
Okay.
When I give you a row number, we talk about any of this that we've discussed, it would say, you know, like row 45, blah, 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 and it would correlate to that on the spreadsheet.
Mike, we have a resident who wants to say something.
Let's go through this and then I'll let you speak afterwards. Okay.
My question is more procedural.
Yeah.
This is the first time a lot of us have seen this as well. What are you voting on? Can you vote on this in a work session?
No, so we're not voting on anything. All we're doing is Vinnie is recommending some cuts. Okay. We're going to look at those cuts. All right. We're going to come back next week and we're going to vote on it. Okay? If that makes sense.
Are you going to say what the cuts are or are you just going to say?
If you let him go, yeah, that's what. No, that's okay. No, that's what I'm trying to get. I think it's better off we hold off the questions until.
Is there any public conversation ever?
Excuse me?
Is there any public input?
Once we're done, but let's get through this first and then, you know, before we go there. Thank you.
So we can, can we pull it up on the screen at least? I mean, people don't have anything to look at.
If you want to send me the most recent one you have.
I mean, I just have a, I have a printout. I don't know.
Well, I can send you the email, Mike, of what is on my phone.
I didn't get it, so.
Yeah, okay, hold on.
It's probably different than what I have on this piece of paper, but.
He went through 23 hours line by line for 2,000 lines to come up with this. I think at least give them time to talk. Okay, good.
All right, Mike, I just sent it to you.
Yeah, Mike, if you can put it up, the problem is it's probably not accurate.
It's not here yet.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It'd just be easier just to go through them and then I'll get, you know, we'll have the week to go. I'm just saying, I think, I don't want to confuse anybody.
Whatever you like to do.
And then you'll get the heart. And then it's a fair amount of what we discussed, but. So can I go? All right. So, and again, we're not going to vote on this tonight.
Oh.
Okay, great. So it's going to be the Gray Snowmobile Club, which is row 31. The adjusted amount is going to be $0. Row 45.
Wait, hang on, so you're proposing to eliminate $2,000 from the Snowmobile Club?
Correct.
Have you processed that with the Snowmobile Club?
We have not.
I just want to point out that the Snowmobile Club is responsible, and the ATV Club when it was in existence, for doing all the trail clearing on the trails in Gray, apart from the Libby Hill trails, of course. But I mean, they, obviously our winters have changed somewhat with climate, with, you know, global warming and climate change, but they still do use those trails and a lot of other people do as well for mountain biking, dog walking, cross-country skiing, snow shoeing, just walking or running. And I think it's a shame. I mean, what will replace their work on the trails?
So, you know, we don't, I guess I don't want to get into that. We don't contribute to other clubs or other things in the community. We used to do that once and a prior town council had eliminated those. So it's really not, I don't think it's fair for the other clubs not to be getting any kind of support when we're supporting them.
I think we should, but we get a service from the Snowmobile Club and I think we should consult them.
Well, you know, I guess at this point, and Mike, you tell me, I just prefer just to run through these.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing. And then we can put together some notes and I think we're going to have, yeah. Just run through them and then we'll come back. Yep.
So row 45 is staff training, adjusted amount is $2,000. Row 47 is.
And when you say $2,000, are you saying?
That's the adjusted amount.
That's what you're cutting?
That's, no, that's where we're adjusting it to.
Okay. Could you maybe let us know the number you propose to cut so I can ensure that's?
I'll give you, I'll give you everything.
Can you, so what I'd like is, if it's okay with you, Vinnie, if you could say, okay, this is what we're cutting and this is what is going to remain, that would help.
Okay. I have, I'll read this one. I've got another one. Okay. I'll read this. I get what you're saying. Okay. So staff training. And again, if you look at the budget, there's over 2,000 lines. And within those 2,000 lines, there's all kinds of different departments and different things within those. So when we go through some of these line cuts, it may say staff training, but it may be not for one department, it may be for another department. So basically on row 45, the staff training amount was originally $3,000 and it's down to $2,000. Council training was, which is row 47, was $1,200. It's down to $8,000. Row 71 is contingency. It was $50,000. It is now at $0. 73 is professional services. It was at $12,000. It is now down to $4,000. Row 75, which is the audit, was $50,000. It is now down to $35,000. Row 151, which is ERC Committee, was $3,500. It is now down to $0. Row 152 is Service Milestone Awards. It was $2,500. It is $500. Row 153, which is Spot Awards, was $1,500. It is $750. Row 161. was $1,500, it is $750. Row 161 is Employee Training and Workshops, that was $7,000, it is now $3,500. Row 162, which is HR Staff Training, was $2,000, it is now $1,000. Row 163, which is Employee Development, Events and Stipends, was $2,500, it is $1,000. Miscellaneous, which, row 166, which is Miscellaneous Guest Speakers, was $1,000, it is now $0.00. Row 167, which is Educational Reimbursement, was $5,000, it is now $0.00. Row 470, which is Train Us For Workshops, was $5,000, it is now $1,500. 512, which is Under Member Dues, this is under the Economic Development, it was $4985, it is now $3985. Row 524, which was Advertising, at $15,000, is now $0.00. Row 526, which is Professional Services, was $33,957, it is now $3,957. 535, which is Village Support, which is $5,000, is now $0.00. Row 592, which is Planning and Professional Development, was $4,000, $450, is now $2,000. 596, which is Advertising, which is for the public hearings for code enforcement, was $12,000, and now $6,000. Row 606, Planning Consulting, which was $20,000, is now $7,500. This is for Code, which is row 610, Safety Shoes and Clothing, which was $2250, is now $1,200. Row 732, New Employee Computers, was $12,000, it is now $10,000. Row 735, which is for Copiers, was $20,000, it is now $14,000, which covers our lease. Row 871, which is Office Equipment, was $4,000, is now $12,000. Row 872, which is for Books, was $33,000, is now $16,000. 875 is Audio Visual, it was $9,000, is now $3,500. And Row 890 is Personal Development, which was $4,000, which is now $2,000. And that comes to a total of $206,250, of which $53,450, Mike, is TIF.
Say that last part again?
I'll get that. It is $53,450 of the money is TIF money.
So that's money that doesn't cost taxpayers any...
That's right, but it's reallocatedable.
So, Mike, I have a question for you. What does that mean, as far as it's reallocatedable, when he says that?
So, the funds that we had proposed to use for economic development activities are eligible under some of the town's TIF districts that we have, and so we can use those, as we did in fiscal year '25, to support our, the establishment of the town's Economic Development Department. And so if those funds aren't used to support economic development activities, they'll remain in the TIF account to be used for other eligible activities under the TIF project plan.
And can you just say briefly what will happen if we don't spend the TIF monies?
Well, if we don't spend the TIF monies collectively, then that money gets returned to the general fund, and there's a penalty associated with that, with the state valuation associated, that was, that was used to defer the aid to education, municipal revenue sharing, as well as the county tax. And so, some of the TIF funds that we do have remaining, which is something I've mentioned before at other public meetings, we have to consider potentially an extension of those TIFs, in order to be able to continue to have the tax shift, the benefit of the tax shift associated with the aid to education, and those, specifically aid to education is the largest one, those formulas that I mentioned. But there could be a penalty associated with not using the TIF funds appropriately.
Right, so not only would we pay a penalty on the unused TIF funds, but we would also see our state aid to education go down, and our municipal revenue sharing go down, which would cost taxpayers more.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for instance, the two, there's two TIFs that expire, one in fiscal year '27 and one in fiscal year '28, the Northbrook TIF and the South Gray TIF. And if those TIFs weren't extended, the rough estimates are about a $700,000 to $800,000 shift in just aid to education alone. And it doesn't happen instantly, it has like a two-year catch-up period. So the town would see that new valuation for two years, and could reduce taxes and things of that nature with that, and then in subsequent years, they would see that a substantial increase in the cost for education, because the money that the town receives from the state for aid to education would be reduced by between $700,000 and $800,000.
Okay, thank you.
But we are working on doing those, right?
We're planning to propose those as part of the fiscal year '27 budget vote, as they're required to be voted on by the voters, in the form of government that we have with the town meeting referendum. We haven't been able to begin fully working on those, because we've had to work on the current budget. But we plan to have some public events where we can explain the benefits of TIF. We plan to have Chair Johnson called it a TIF for Dummies workshop, so that people could understand the benefits to the community for those TIFs. And right now, the purpose of using them for economic development funds, specifically with the Village TIF, which has a number of years, is if our Economic Development Director can work to create growth and value in the Village TIF, so we're using the TIF money to help create future tax revenue in the community, that then when that TIF does expire, that tax revenue will exist. And so, right now, the Village TIF generates some, and we'll be able to measure as that value grows, and say we have any new businesses, or new buildings, or something that happens within the village, which is what the town has proposed to do in their comprehensive plan, that they voted on a number of years ago, to have growth and development happen in the village, then that's going to generate more money. So the work of our economic development activities will help to generate more revenue to support economic development activities and the projects that are identified from, by the TIF.
Right.
Denise, can we ask you, can you come up here?
And, Mike, I do want to touch, basically, on the TIF stuff. I was going to reach out to you yesterday, but I know you weren't feeling well, so I know that there are other avenues. So we definitely, you know, to her point, we obviously want to use that money.
But specifically with this budget, I think why you mentioned the TIF money, is it doesn't lower the property tax rate.
That's right.
In this current budget. So above the $53,000 that he mentioned, again, I don't have the totals, I don't have the numbers calculated in front of me, that would be a wash, because there would be no revenue to offset those, so the expenses would be a wash. There would be no reduction in the tax rate or anything.
Yeah.
So Denise, I have a couple of questions for you. If, two questions to this, is that if we take this $53,000 out of here, what is proposed, is, are there other things that you could think of that we could spend it on that may be more valuable?
Well, let's start by talking about the $30,000 in professional services. Part of that $30,000, you know, was going to be potential projects that would be upcoming. It's something that you have budgeted in years past. That said, approximately 10 to 15 of that was earmarked for legal services, as you begin to look at the extensions, as you begin to look at moving forward to whether or not you want to take the Village TIF, and if you want to turn that into a bona fide downtown district. So, at a minimum, I would think you would want to leave at least $10,000 in there, to be able to cover that. That said, you could spend that out of the general fund budget, but knowing right now the current status of what the TIF is generating, is that anything in the TIF district is 100% kept here. If you take it out of the general fund, it takes you twice as much money at a 50-50 loss, to be able to generate that amount. So it makes no sense to pay the $10,000 legal fees, when it's specifically related to economic development, to take it out of general fund. For example, at the 50-50 loss, in other words, decreased revenue sharing, and a decrease in state school subsidy, and an increase in county taxes, it behooves you to spend as much money that's related to economic development out of the TIF fund. So, in the general fund, you essentially have to raise $20,000 in order to spend 10.
When do we have to, I know one of the TIFs is coming up, when do we need to start working on that, in your, in your...
Yeah, well, obviously, one of the reasons why I was hired, or the position was created, was to take a look at what you, are you going to do? What is the bewitching hour? And so, I brought this up here, and it's recently been published on the town's website. Your Northbrook TIF district was established in March of 1997, which basically means it expires in March of 2027. So what that means is, you have to have some sort of an idea, whether you're going to extend this or not, up in Augusta by January of 2026, in order to be approved by March of 2026, to have an impact on what you're going to spend in your FY2027 budget. And in order to get that in January, to have the public involved in your public hearings, you would need to start this process like, I don't want to say yesterday.
Like September?
But it would, this coming September.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And so in order to do that, we have to get started on that project, and to have that timeline.
What would you need, with regards to that, what do you need from us?
Of the $30,000 cut, I would ask to have at least 10 grand reinstated, in order to compensate, to get the attorney's fees for the extensions. Because the other thing, to make it economical, is you would want to do both extensions, whether they're a year off, get those in at the same time, and to also do your bona fide downtown district versus just a village district, to get that done at the same time. Your amendment programs would look the same, once set of legal fees, it's just a lot easier and cleaner to get that process done.
Denise, I could behoove everybody, if you actually took a second, and explained what you mean by downtown district versus what we're doing today, because I don't think most people do.
So, when it comes to tax increment financing districts, okay, they have a state valua, a local valuation cap, and acreage cap, which is 5% of your existing acreage, and 5% of your valuation. Downtown districts and transit-oriented districts, which we're not doing in transit, are both allowed to have unlimited acreage and unlimited valuation, which benefits a community. For example, if you take your downtown district right now, even though it's the downtown, it's the village, it's just a regula TIF district. So it's subject to the valuation and the acreage cap. A bona fide downtown has no cap, so you could extend your downtown further to accommodate more infrastructure improvements, for example, roads, sidewalks, because all of those connect to the downtown, therefore you can get a lot more bang for your buck. A couple of communities that I've served in, we were paying $500,000 to $600,000 worth of infrastructure improvements, whether that was waterlines, or roadways, sidewalks, connectivity, that would have hit the general fund. So in this particular case, let's say you have hypothetically a $250,000 sidewalk project, right? On the general fund side, it's going to cost you $500,000, the way that the tax shift goes, it's going to cost you $500,000 of general fund revenue to pay for that $250,000 project, because you're losing 250. But if you take it completely out of the general fund, out of the TIF fund, for example, straight 250, it's already there. And so, and then you have an existing balance that hasn't been spent down, therefore it behooves you to take a look at that balance, and what can you spend on that you're currently going to be paying out of the general fund anyway. So you're not creating new projects, you're not creating new things, you're just increasing your viability as a community. If that makes sense. Is that a little too complicated, but I'm trying to...
Good.
No.
Can you talk about that, what the remaining $20,000 of that 30 grand cut, would you, what were you envisioning using that for?
Oh, we had money in there for the village zoning, because as we started taking a look at the zoning project, and that would have involved, whether it's legal or professional services, consulting services for that. So that would just delay that opportunity. But we all know that right now, that some of the zoning has to be changed, in order to encourage more economic development. For example, we've had a couple of developers come in with retail, that would be on the first floor, and maybe residential on the second floor, can't be done in your current downtown, which is amazing, you know, when we take a look at that. We had folks from GP Cog present to you, folks, and give you a presentation, and that's a limiting factor. So, whether you redo 100% of the zoning, or take a look at spot areas that you need to fix, we had built in that money for that. Thank you, Mike.
Right, and could you just comment on the value of commercial development, in terms of, you know, the impact on property taxes?
Well, right now, I don't have the exact number, but you're limited, because you're heavy residential property tax-based. And so you need a more diversified portfolio, in order to be able to make you more viable, and not strictly reliant on the residential tax base. So, you need to do things to encourage. But that said, I've been meeting with developers and commercial brokers, and people have been resistant to take a look at that, for several reasons. One is, you know, I hear concerns, and I'm going to do this anecdotal, but I hear concerns about, we don't want to be at Wyndham, we don't want to be at Westbrook and Portland. Well, I hate to let the cat out of the bag, but it's not going to happen. You don't have public sewer, you have limited availability of land, and so it's not going to happen, right? So dismiss that fear for right now, and what we need to do is to take a look at areas of town that need to be rezoned appropriately so, and to attract the appropriate business. And so, and the litmus test is the community, right? You don't want to bring in businesses that's not, people aren't receptive to having. So you want to be able to encourage businesses that could be supported. You know, I've served in a community that had market leakage to the tune of $3 million going to New Hampshire. And so people are concerned about taxes here, so people are going to Wyndham for services that aren't here. People are going to Portland and all of these other communities. So what are the types of businesses that you could bring here, that aren't going to, that are going to add value, not only to the tax base, but to the residents, and not create leakage? Like, where are people going to get to these services? I'll throw out one, for example, you have to drive to Wyndham or wherever to mail a package, right? I mean, there's no UPS franchise or anything like that. And so, and then you start thinking about, well, what creates so much traffic? Well, if you have to go out of town in order to do things and to conduct business, you know, that's a problem. But, anyway, I could get on and on and on about the philosophical pieces of it, but, sorry.
So, no, it's great. So, it sounds like zoning is a big thing.
Zoning's a big thing.
It's a huge thing.
Okay.
If I may add, Mr. Chair, we, we work together to make significant adjustments to the economic development budget, from what was originally proposed, in order to have it be more palatable. And again, it doesn't have any impact on the property tax rate this year, and so we, what we left in there, we thought were the bare necessities to run a viable economic development department. So without those, it's, Denise will get it done, because she can get it done, but it just impacts the viability. You know, if we, if one of the economic development activities that we, that was suggested to be cut, which is Village Supplies, we, if we want to form a downtown organization, which is sponsored through the Main Street America program, to help make our village more vibrant, we might need supplies for events, or decorations, or things of that nature, to help promote our village as a viable place to conduct business. And we used to have a lot more funds set aside in that, we reduced it significantly, but we just want to be able to have funds, you know, if there wants to be a community event in the village, or things of that nature, we have the flexibility. And if those funds aren't spent, they remain set aside for economic development activities in the TIF. So having those funds set aside to support the rezoning efforts, or to support village activities, or to support professional development that Denise needs to do, and things of that nature, we thought we put together a viable economic development budget that really had the bare bones. And again, we made it last year without a person in this position, we have someone in this position, we originally proposed more efforts, and we reduced those, given the desire of the community to make reductions, and we're trying to do, do as much as we can with as least as possible.
Is Village Support Christmas lights?
That's what it's been used for in the past, yeah. The town council in the past had asked me to include funds, and that was an eligible expense to support holiday lighting in the community.
Yeah, all right, cool.
But it doesn't need to be spent for that, it could be spent for other...
Sure, no, and we'll go through this. I mean, obviously, you and I, we had gone through this, and I do have some questions more on the TIF, and I'd love to get, you know, if I could speak with Denise, that would be fantastic, a little bit more, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can all get together to chat.
I know we don't have a lot of time, but I do have, Andrea, do you mind coming up about the library?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Denise. I didn't see you behind Mike, I thought you were already gone.
Hello.
Hey, Andrea, how are you?
I am doing all right. How are all of you?
All right, great. So, I know there was some significant cuts proposed, you know, so I guess my question is to you, is that, you know, I want to give you more money, I don't want to give you less, but I know everyone doesn't agree on that, right? So, what, what do these cuts mean, and what do we lose?
Absolutely. So, just to give you some numbers from... So just to give you some numbers from FY '25, in FY '25, we, with our $30,000 book budget, were able to add, or plus our $11,000 AV budget, added 3,450 items to our collection. The average price of those was $11.88, which we get by shopping competitively for our AV, using pre-owned materials, but also by being a part of a collaborative purchasing agreement for books called MHEC, which gets us significant discounts on our books. So we're able to do a lot. The average price of a hardcover book retail is between $26 and $30 right now, so we're getting those at a significant price cut. So in FY '25, we circulated our items 47,306 times, items were renewed 14,531 times. Our patrons borrowed 500 and, excuse me, 5,906 items through interlibrary loan in FY '25. So if you extrapolate, you take that $11.88 cost per item that we added to our collection, actually utilizing our interlibrary loan, we saved the town of just over $70,000 in book costs. So we do a lot with a little, making these costs or cutting the costs, and these are numbers that are new to me, that going from a proposed book budget of $33,000 to a proposed book budget of $16,000, and going from a proposed AV budget of $9,000 to a proposed AV budget of 3,500, which means that instead of adding 3,450 items this year, we will be able to add 1,641 items. I would also like to note that there are currently 4,364 cardholders at our library. About 624 of those are from New Gloucester, who we have a reciprocal agreement with, but many of our great patrons have cards there as well. So we have close to half the town using our, using our public library.
And I know one of the things, a lot of older people go there because they can't buy or get the large print books. Are those any more money, or how does that work?
Large print books are significantly more expensive to get three each month through a special agreement. We spend about $65 a month, but then we add to that through our regular book budget as well. So those we don't get, those are not eligible for any consortium discounts, and I will say, we have more and more folks relying on the large print collection all the time, and I'd be happy to pull those numbers if you'd like them.
And do these cuts affect any of the other things that you guys do? Or is that just really the purchasing of the books and of the, you know, the other-
Well, with less funds available to purchase books, it limits the books that we can get for storytimes. We're not getting the newer books to supplement that. And I should note that the Town of Gray pays $0 for all library programming. All of that is funded through the Gray Public Library Association, which is our nonprofit arm. They give all of us our money for programming, so all we ask the town for is our supply budget, which is relatively unique for a public library or a municipal public library. But I would say it will cut the availability of titles for our three book clubs or for those storytimes or for the many homeschool families that rely on us for their curriculum. It will really impact that. While we do have a great opportunity to get books through interlibrary loan, I think it's important to note that our consortium agreement limits holds to 15 holds at a time per library cardholder. So we can't necessarily replace this much loss through interlibrary loan.
And isn't the case, I believe I've seen in recent years that both the number of library patrons and their usage has gone up?
It has, it definitely dipped during the 2020, like, I would say 2020 to 2022, we really saw a dip and impact from COVID. But one of the things that I also like to highlight is for a large chunk of the past five to seven years, our department has been in flux. There were times when our previous director was serving as interim town manager, we've been short-staffed throughout, so we hadn't had those robust programs. When I took over as the head of youth services, we saw our program numbers go through the roof, we saw our usage numbers go through the roof, and if I can do that with one department, I can only imagine what I can do as the director of the whole library. So I would be devastated if those numbers got cut before we had the chance to show you all the great things we're capable of. And I would really encourage any of you to come to the library, visit there, talk to some of our patrons. I do have an infographic I prepared with all of these numbers, if anyone would like it, but I did include a quote, a new family came to the library recently, father, mother, and their little girl. And I showed them around the library, they were there, you know, within an hour of closing, so it was just me there, it was pretty quiet, and I've visited libraries around the world, it's an occupational hazard that a librarian is going to go to beautiful libraries on vacation, so I think of us as a pretty small operation. But for that little girl and her family, they were there for about just shy of an hour, and when they left, I said, thank you so much for coming in, thank you so much for joining the library, and the little girl just said, this place is magical, and we want to keep that magic going for all of our residents, so. But if you do want any more concrete numbers, those circulation numbers, let me know, shoot me an email, stop by the library and ask for me, I can get you any data that you would like, that is also an occupational hazard and being a librarian.
I think, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You know, for me, guys, I think I need some time to look at this stuff and ask some more questions that I don't have tonight. What I'd like to do is do what we talked about originally, and can we-
I'm not ready to move on, I'll be here till midnight if I have to be. But I want to know, just going down through the list that I'm just kind of now looking at, and some of these are different numbers than what I was given previously, but I'd like to know the impact on employment, employee training and workshops of that, you know, of cutting those line items?
Sure, I'll just quickly mention, that's something that we've been trying to be more diligent with, and in the past, the town hasn't been, and with a full-time HR director, which is fairly new for the town, a few, a couple of years prior to my arrival here, the town is able to better focus on that. And we have been, just like the library, the town office has been in flux at various times, where we've had a couple town managers, an interim town manager, and there hasn't been any consistency for us to be able to begin working on those as much as we'd like to, and we're just starting to hit the ground to better focus on employee training and ensure that everybody has as much training as possible and continue to have us be a desirable place to work and grow. Myself and a couple staff members attended a training today in Augusta where they talked about, that's one of the biggest things for employees, just to be able to see growth opportunities and to be able to learn more and get better at their profession. One of the things that we do utilize our training figures are, we were able to almost double them through the Alfond Workforce Grant Program that exists in the state, where we're eligible to receive up to $1,200 per employee that we use to stretch our training dollars even further. And so, like, for instance, the training I went to today, I think it was like $300, the Alfond Grant Program will reimburse us 50% of that, and they'll do that for each of our town employees up to $1,200. And so that has been something that, it's been important to me to have the town do to try to stretch our training dollars even further. So we're able to leverage what we have for training dollars to do even more with the Alfond Grant Program.
And the training dollars help people do their jobs better, I mean, is that right? And that's the whole purpose of training, right?
Absolutely, yeah, to help us do our jobs better and serve the residents better.
Right, and I mean, I know for myself, I mean, I wouldn't go to a mechanic who hasn't been to a training since 2010 or something, you know, because cars have changed a lot around that. I wouldn't go to a doctor who hasn't gone to a training since 2010, I mean, because medicine changes. I mean, the world is changing, and I think that we need to keep up with it and make sure that our employees continue to get the training that they need to be, to give us the best value for their service, for what we pay them to do. And I've definitely seen an improvement in the quality of the services that town employees are able to provide us in the last several years, and some of it is due to the training they're getting, some of the, you know, there's been a changeover in employees as well. I, let's see.
Just, I want to touch base on this, you know, in the business environment and the public sector, there's a saying, it's called see one, do one, and teach one. And what I think we can do a little bit better in the town is we could send one or two people to the training, and then they can come back and they can help educate the others. I think that helps with, with working, it helps with your presentation skills, it helps with a lot of things, and I think that's one of the things that we were looking at, and that's something, obviously, we had talked about. And I'm not saying we're not looking at adjusting it moving forward or doing something down the line, but I think that's an avenue that, you know, when we got elected, we got elected to cut taxes and look at ways to save, this doesn't cut any service, it basically is just saying, how can we all give a little bit to reach a common goal? So I'm not saying we don't do training, all I'm saying is have someone come on back, see it, do it, teach it.
Do you know that that's not happening now?
I know, I don't think that's happening now, because I've talked to, you know, I've had a conversation about it. And again, I mean, we can go through all these, I think this, you know, to Mike's, who's out right now, to his point, I think the best thing is, I'll get this list out, we'll get over it, we'll read it, we'll review it, we'll answer all the questions, and then we can look forward to next Tuesday to finalize it and vote on it one way or the other.
Well, we have people here tonight, though, and who might not be able to be here next week. I'd like to know, you know, what the impact of reducing the audit budget would be, for example, are we going to have trouble? It's hard enough to find an auditor for municipal audits these days.
Sure, I can actually answer that, I looked at the contract, and the contract was for, I think it was $35,000 was this year, and it had gone up each year from what I saw, and I know that we're looking hopefully to do two this year to catch up.
Right.
But we haven't done that in the past, so if that happens, we'll look at maybe the general fund money to do it. So you want to put money in for what could be, I'm trying to help the taxpayer and put money in what-
But we have 24 and 25, but the FY '24 and FY '25 audits to do, right?
Yeah, that's why we had the budget amount that we had in there, was there's two audits to be done in this fiscal year, and then in the next fiscal year, we would have proposed to reduce it.
Right, of course, that makes sense, yeah.
To match, but that's why we had the amount that we had in there, because we have to conduct two audits in this fiscal year.
Right.
So we would essentially, we've set ourselves up, if we make that reduction, to overspend that budget line.
So what happens if we overspend that budget line?
It's, it's my job as the treasurer of the town to ensure that the entire budget is balanced, and so I would have to make adjustments elsewhere in the budget to ensure that it balances.
But it just seems nuts to me, knowing that we have to do two audits, that we don't budget for them. I don't understand the rationale for that, or why that's good business planning. I also am interested in the planning and professional, I'm sorry, the cuts to the code enforcement and planning lines, there's planning consulting, is that, is that different from the, you know, from the zoning consulting? Is there some other additional plans?
Which, um-
Oh, I'm sorry, we're looking at line 28 in the spreadsheet, it's 606, I guess.
Oh, six, all right, cool, all right, hold on.
So there-
That was something, if, that was stated as, if we needed, we haven't done it, but if we needed to engage in those types of services, we could use that for rezoning efforts.
Is that, is that correct, or is that for rezoning?
If I may, so the, so that was money, we eliminated a position in the planning department, we previously had a planning director and a town planner, we eliminated the planning director and merged the department with code enforcement to create the code enforcement and planning department. And not knowing if our current staffing model would have enough capacity to handle every planning matter that comes in, we set aside $20,000 for outside planning consulting, some of that which was reserved to support the rezoning efforts. Since the departure of our planning director, the rezoning efforts have essentially been put on pause because we don't have staff capacity to lead that with our current staffing model. And so those will continue to remain on pause, and so we tried to leverage in the economic development budget, some funds to support the rezoning of the village-
Right.
-which hadn't been really started yet, and then some other funds available to support the continued rezoning. We received a proposal from the Greater Portland Council of Governments to help us to finish those rezoning efforts, and we were going to part, fund those partially with that budget line and partially with the economic development budget line, but that has been, been put on hold, given the uncertainty surrounding the budget.
Right, and to be clear, I mean, the rezoning is necessary because it's, it's needed to implement, fully implement the 2020 comprehensive plan, which voters overwhelmingly approved it in 2020. Since then, we had a pandemic, we've had, you know, Michael is our third town manager in that timeframe, there's been a lot of transition and upheaval, and so we, you know, we just weren't able to focus on the rezoning. But that's an important thing that the town needs, is way behind on, so I would be absolutely opposed to cutting those funds. We need to finish that, we get complaints from developers all the time about, about our zoning, and I think we do need to take care of our business.
George, you have a question there, Mike, with that said, is that if, if this is cut, right, is there any reason why we still can't do that? And we obviously have plenty of money, you know, we have buffed, you know, I think one of the things that a lot of these people, and correct me if I'm wrong, as I look to the right specifically, is that, you know, we're trying to get this budget into alignment, where we, as you mentioned earlier, we have done it wrong over the years, you know, where we've taken too much money and we have too much in our budget and it hasn't gotten used, and we don't want to do that anymore, and we're trying to get this cleaned up. Is there any reason why we still can't do that if this gets cut? Because there is plenty of money in there, couldn't you, you know, isn't that something you could talk to us about rezoning and cost and pulling it from other areas?
We could make budget sacrifices in other areas, we just, we build a budget to plan based on the expenses that we know we need, and with the transition of that department, we wanted to ensure we had enough resources to be able to deal with that and more right-size that department in the future. We eliminated a position that had about 100 and, almost $150,000 of pay and benefits, and lowered to set aside $20,000 to help with efforts that that position essentially vacated. And so we, we thought that that was a fair compromise in order to generate that. But if the council would like to cut further, we'll, we'll figure out how to do it. I don't have the proposal in front of me from GP Cog in order to help us with the rezoning efforts, but I think it was in the area of $30,000, and so that's why we were planning to use some of this money in the planning budget to continue with the regular rezoning, and then some money in the regular budget to support the, or in the economic development budget to support the village rezoning.
And my last question is, why, so the money that's being cut, is this Tiff money, is that we're talking about, we're talking about?
No.
No, it's just, so why, why couldn't we, why couldn't we use that, you know, some of that Tiff money that we set aside for this? Am I missing something?
Yeah.
It, it's not necessarily an eligible economic development activity, because it's ongoing to maintain our current zoning, and then if we need planning consulting to support other planning efforts in the town, those aren't necessarily eligible economic development activities.
Okay, I must have heard Denise wrong, because earlier she said that we needed to rezone and-
In the village.
All right.
Yeah, so I set aside some money in economic development to support rezoning of the village, and set aside some money in planning to support the total rezoning. So I'm utilizing-
How do I?
I'm utilizing funds in two areas to support the village rezoning, to support rezoning in the entire community, which is, which is some, a project that's been ongoing for the town for a number of years.
Right.
And we had money, the town previously had money set aside for rezoning efforts, because there, even though Doug was here, he had consultants that helped him with those efforts, and so we didn't really change a whole lot in that sense to have money set aside to support the rezoning efforts.
And to your point, Mike, I mean, yes, we have, you know, budgeted more in recent years than we've ended up spending, but we've also already trimmed the budget substantially. So, I mean, there isn't a lot of overage or room in this budget that we can count on to pay, if we contract with somebody, we need to know that there's money in the budget to pay them to do the work. And so I think, you know, it's irresponsible if we think we're going to contract with, you know, an entity that, you know, to not have, to not be sure that we have the money to pay them. And, and I, you know, I've said it in previous meetings, I'll say it again, I mean, if we're, it matters that we're good partners with our contractors and with other entities that we interact with, if we're not, people aren't going to want to work with us.
I agree. So I think we need to move on here, man, I just want to make this, and let me know if you guys all agree with me. I, if we were to vote on these items right now, it would probably be three to two, and it would pass and be cut. I need a week to go through this and try to get some of this not cut. It's up to, I mean, will you give me a week to look at this? give me a week to look at this and, and see?
No, absolutely. And I think based off of what, what Ann says, I think, you know, I want to give her that, that, that right, that privilege to go through that, see what other questions would come up with. So absolutely, absolutely.
Well, seeing we're going to be here to midnight, wouldn't any of the staff like to get up and speak about what council-
Mr. Chair, if I may just make a scheduling suggestion?
Yep, that's fine.
If, if, if the, I know we were trying to give people as much advance notice as possible, but if we had a workshop on the 12th where you made cuts, people wouldn't necessarily have a chance to react to those. So it may, may make more sense to have a meeting on the 19th, to have enough time that if the council wants to think about these changes, and then on the 19th, we could have a budget workshop at 5:30, and then we could have a town council meeting where you approve the warrants themselves. And that would be enough ample time to have the meeting. Otherwise, we have to get a packet out for a meeting next week, tomorrow. And so we wouldn't be able to get a packet out with any proposed changes and everything. Again, I have, I've seen a list of last week. I haven't seen the most updated list.
That's, I think that's, I think that's more than fair.
I'm, but I'm just going to check with everyone's schedule.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I can do the 19th. I think that's a good idea.
Alright. But my only concern is, Mike, is that will that, if we approve that, it has, we have to get this done that night?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do this-
This is it. You know, we have to get this done, and will that, will, will be able to vote on the 9th if we do it on the 19th?
Yeah, if we do it on the 19th, that's enough time for us to advertise the town meeting for the 9th. The, the one thing I would say is tonight during the town council meeting, there is budget warrants to be voted on in a public hearing for those. So you can entertain folks from the public who may be here-
Sure.
-who wish to speak-
That's fine.
-tonight.
Yep.
And then you could table the warrants to a meeting on August 19th.
Okay.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Moving, okay, alright. Alright, so thank you, Mike, and everyone that got up and spoke. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and at seven, if I could see, 7:01, I'm going to take a five-minute break so people can stretch their legs, do what they need to do, and we'll be back at, let's think, let's just make it 7:10. That'll give people a few minutes here.
I don't feel it on air late.
Oh, there it is. Everyone ready? Thank you. Hey, I want to thank everyone coming to the regular town council meeting Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The meeting location is here at the Town Council Chambers on 24 Main Street. I also wanted to remind everyone that we do have our meeting on Teams. And if you need to call in, if you're having a problem with your Teams, you can always call up 469-708-0487. And the meeting ID is 474-016590. I also want to comment that in the past, people have said they've had a hard time getting on. I have not heard that lately, but if there's-
It was happening tonight, actually. The budget workshop was not being streamed until somebody reached out to me and I let-
Okay, thank you. And whoever did that, I appreciate that. And I'm not sure why it wasn't working because they are supposed to be televised. And the last thing I am going to say is that I, we are ordering, we haven't, we've had some things going on, we haven't ordered a clock yet, but I do have a clock here. I'm going to hold it up or somebody's going to hold up. I want everyone to be on the same page here when, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But I want to make sure that everyone gets the amount of time that they deserve. So this meeting will be held in person and online with the link provided above. Residents wishing to participate in public comment, a public hearing portion of the agenda may do so by clicking in to participate or call in using the phone number that I just provided as detailed in the agenda. And my number is 207-712-6387. If you can't get ahold of anybody, text me and I will see the message and I will make sure that we reach out to you to answer any questions. I'm going to do a quick rule call since I started on my left last time, I'm going to start on my right. Counsel Farrington.
Present.
Counsel Palangi.
Present.
Counsel Gass.
Present.
And Counsel Klinger.
Present.
And Counsel Johnson here as well. And sitting to my right is the Town Manager, Mike Foley. Would we all please stand to do the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So I want to start with the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes from July 1st, 2025 meeting? Okay, can I just do unanimous consent unless anybody has any other objections? Okay, unanimous consent. Krista, if you're watching, we love you, but you had a lot of changes every time. You can reach out to me and yell at me for that one. All right, so I'm going to start with Counsel Communications. I am actually going to start to my left. Let Ann go and I will go last. So Ann, can you start with your communications?
Yes. I received some correspondence regarding the town budget, traffic issues at Meadowview, prioritizing a mooring ordinance to save Main Lakes, a 250th anniversary tree, and leadership change at the transfer station and Lacy Antonson regarding the Blueberry Festival. In connection with the work of the Resiliency Committee, I attended a meeting on July 21st at Chief Elkanich's office to discuss emergency preparedness. This meeting was also attended by the Chair of the Resilience Committee and a volunteer from the Gloucester involved with Bling. On July 20th, I attended Mike Johnson's Road Association Annual Meeting to discuss the work of the Resiliency Committee on the Community Action Grant and the work on the surface water protection ordinance and really appreciated the opportunity to talk to the residents and do some Q and A. On that, I also attended a training on July 23rd on the National Incident Management System or NIMS. NIMS is a, provides a consistent nationwide template for the command and coordination of emergency response to incidents and natural disasters, conducted in large part by our own chief. It was a great intro into that world about which I know very little. So Resiliency Committee in July, the committee presented the work of the Community Action Grant to the Little Savannah Lake and Forest Lake Associations. I really want to shout out, give a shout out to our resilience fellow Audrey Piper, who was, I think, did one of those completely on her own. And thanks to Shaleen Shavchenko for drafting the committee's annual report to the town. The Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District will present its work on the Watershed Management Plan at our next meeting, which is September 2nd, unless something disrupts that. And I and some other committee members will meet with the Ordinance Advisory Committee to discuss the surface water protection ordinance later this month. Audrey has also completed work on the third and fourth of the five watershed protection videos we pledged to do under our state grant. She hopes to complete that final one by the end of the month. Could not have done this work without Audrey. Just a reminder that this work is funded through the Federal AmeriCorps program in part, and Gray had to pay very little for her services. And the committee, the Resiliency will have a table at the Blueberry Fest and will skip their August meeting. Open space met in July to plan their table at the Blueberry Fest. Members also discussed a recent presentation from the executive directors of the local land trust and a pitch from a local resident about an idea for a greenway in Gray. The committee supports this concept and will likely seek to present at a workshop to the council about this this fall. I just want to note, we accepted with regret the decision both Bob Coleman and Caitlin Nozo to not renew their membership on the Open Space Committee. Their terms are up and they're not renewing. Bob is a large landowner in East Gray who was especially helpful in crafting the open space plan and previously served as Chair. Caitlin has been our Chair for the last several years and has also done a terrific job. We'll miss them, but really thank them for their service.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the Dry Mills Schoolhouse Committee met on July 7th. I couldn't attend the meeting as it conflicted with a work meeting in the middle of the day, but I've read meeting minutes and their work on making improvements to the schoolhouse and museum displays appears to be progressing. The Dry Mills Schoolhouse will be helping with the Gray Wild Blueberry Festival this coming Saturday, so they will not hold a regular meeting this month. And they plan to resume meeting in September on a date still to be determined. Although I was unavailable to attend the Gray Wild Blueberry Festival meetings in July, they met on the 14th and again on the 28th. I was able to arrive late at the meeting on the 14th and introduce myself to the committee members. And Lacy Antonson was also available to meet with me the following day here at Town Hall Campus to give me an overview of the festival. Per the committee, all the planning for the festival is pretty much completed and on course. Staff review committee, I believe, was able to meet on July 14th. Again, wasn't able to attend that meeting due to a work conflict, but based on a memo I received, they had one business item to review in regards to a site plan amendment for the Avesta Meadowview 2 project. The project is almost completed, but there were a few proposed changes requested in relation to parking, addition of a trash enclosure at the west end of the property, addition of a crosswalk, addition of a second generator, addition of an underground propane tank in relation to the second generator, and addition of stormwater management infrastructure in front of the new building. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Mr. Farrington.
I had a resident reach out to me as the departure of Randy Cookson is coming up. Why isn't this job being posted for new applicants to apply to? I think this is something that we need to look into. And I also did the Gray Community Television Committee and there wasn't very many people there, they didn't have a quorum. So if anybody would like to volunteer for that, that'd be greatly appreciated. ZBA, also they need volunteers for that committee. They just had one on the agenda and that went smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. I attended the regular planning board meeting, which was on Thursday, July 10th at 2025 at 7:00 PM. The new business was Miller Refrigeration Company here in Gray looking to expand and add on to their facility at 93 Lewiston Road. Miller Refrigeration, the company, the representatives of the planning board were very, had a very positive discussion. They'll be moving forward with regards to the next steps in the process. And I'd just like to say it's great to see a business here in Gray looking to expand. And obviously, we would encourage and support that with other businesses moving forward. And then the second one was I attended the Ordinance Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 15th at 6:00 PM. The purpose of that meeting was to review and comment on the surface water protection ordinance draft, proposed standards and proposed setbacks, the purpose of this ordinance. The ordinances are to prevent and minimize surface water pollution due to phosphorus contained in stormwater runoff from developed areas, to promote preventative measures and basically to improve surface water runoff quality, et cetera. We didn't have anybody there from the Resiliency Committee at the meeting and we ended up basically coming up with more questions and answers, but we will be having another meeting upcoming to bring all parties together in the upcoming weeks. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And let's see, for myself, I had a library trustee meeting, held the fourth Tuesday of every quarter. The next one is in September, 23rd, '25. I'll say it's an absolute pleasure to be working with Andrea and her team. It's, you know, they do a lot for what little they have, you know, and one of the things that they're doing is they're acquiring VCRs to be able to loan out. And what's funny about that is that I've had a few people lately ask me if I have a VCR they can borrow because they've got some old videos, things like that. And if we are able to, we're going to get a VCR that actually allows you to convert your, your old tapes to, you know, new digital. So they've got a great group of people. I look forward to working with them. I also met with Denise about TIFs, as Michael mentioned, doing the TIF for Dummies. I've had some things, I changed jobs recently, so I've got some things going on. I've started the process. We're going to do a video, you know, for the town, probably do a couple different videos with explaining, you know, how TIFs work, how they affect the town, and why they can be good. I received multiple calls about Randy's resignation. I received the same message about the new hire process for his position. I, let's see, I got the Dr. Akers email and, which Ann had mentioned earlier. Also, an email about the Mountain View Road Association and a driveway that some questions came up during our association meeting that Ann was helping me look into. I received some emails about the tank replacement, both from town citizens and from the water district and why that's important. Michael and I had a meeting with the Gray New Gloucester School Board and an individual from the New Gloucester Board. I think, you know, we're going to try to do that on a monthly basis, or is it monthly or quarterly, quarterly basis. Great first meeting. You know, I think that it's important that we have a good working relationship with the school. You know, I think that, you know, now that Sam's not ahead of the board, you know, we should be able to get a lot of things done. But no, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to have a good relationship with those guys, make sure we're all on the same page. And some interesting things came up, you know, somebody from, the New Gloucester member asked if there was an opportunity for us to do some more sharing of services that, you know, we'll talk about later on when we get some more details. So it's a good opportunity to meet with New Gloucester and the school board. I did get the email about Avesta that somebody else is handling. And then I got a bunch of emails about the budget that, you know, about trying to get that passed and move forward. And then, let's see here, is this, am I doing this now? Yeah, okay, all right. And then, yeah, no problem at all. So Randy, as we all know, Randy has decided to retire, so he had asked me to read this letter. To all concerned, by means of this letter, Randy Cookson, Solid Waste Director, Town of Gray, do hereby submit this notice of my resignation as Solid Waste Director. My last day of employment with the town will be on October 4th, 2025. The decision has not come easily. My wife and I have deliberated this for some time and agree that it's time for me to focus on our health and our well-being. Be it known that this decision was ours and ours alone. The Town of Gray's population has increased significantly since my taking this position in April of 2001. It has outgrown the present facility necessitating the need for new direction, one that I cannot lead and manage my personal obligations simultaneously. I will work with the new management to the best of my ability as the town goes through this period of transition. I highly recommend that the town seek a successor who is experienced in the field of solid waste management. There are undoubtedly many transfer station operated, operation managers throughout the state who has knowledge and drive would be ideal for candidates for this position. In closing, I just want to thank all those whom I've worked with and had the opportunity to serve over these past 24 years sincerely Rod Cookson. And then I just wanted to add this. You know, on behalf of the entire town, Randy, if you're watching this, we just want to express our deepest gratitude for everything that you've done over the past 20-plus years at our transfer station. Your dedication, your hard work and steady leadership have not only saved the town money, but have also made the transfer station something that is truly special. A place where neighbors connect, swap items and share conversations that build our community. The swap shop you created became more than just a place to drop things off. It became a symbol of your resourcefulness and your care for this town. You turned what could have been a routine municipal operation into something personal, meaningful and welcoming. You've always handled every situation with grace and presence, always with kid gloves, and that's something that we will never forget. It's no surprise that employees say you're the best boss that you've, they've ever had. That speaks volumes about the kind of leader and person that you are. While we are deeply saddened by your departure and your, and the health challenges you're facing, we know that this chapter will give you time to enjoy what matters most, your wife, your grandkids and many well-earned quiet moments ahead. Please know that this town has always had your back and always will. We'll be there to celebrate you at your retirement party, just as you've been there for us in, day in and day out for so many years. Thank you, Randy. You've made a lasting difference in this community and we will forever be grateful. And, you know, I can speak for myself and many that have called Randy, you're going to be missed. And I will do a shot of tequila with you at your retirement party like you requested. Thank you. All right. I'm not a tequila drinker, but I will do it. All right, so next, report from the Town Manager, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few brief items. We have the monthly table talk sessions, which are starting next month, I'm sorry, this month, at the Local Centric Cafe located at 4B Brown Street. The first one that we have is tomorrow at 8:30 AM. So be sure to check out their new cafe and come in and chat with me about anything you'd like to talk about. We'll hopefully be able to have some room for some folks there to be able to do that. And then I just wanted to remind everyone to continue to look at our digital newsletter and sign up for our digital newsletter. Our staff does an outstanding job producing that twice a month, so we encourage everyone to sign up. Reminder, I know it's been mentioned a few times and I'm sure it'll be mentioned later, the Wild Blueberry Festival is taking place this weekend, an exciting community event that I'm looking forward to. And then also included in today's packet are the monthly department reports as well as the fiscal '25 Budget to Actual Report with the status as it was when I produced that report. There is some remaining items before that fiscal year is closed out and I'll provide an updated report at a future meeting. And that's all I had to share today, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before I get to the public comments, I also want to address anybody that's from South Portland or Cheverus or I guess even Gardner, may or may not know that Coach Wolf Graham has been a football coach for 40-plus years, passed away yesterday. And my condolences to his family and to anybody that had the opportunity to be coached by him. I did not play football, but a lot of my friends did. And he was the type of character that we all should strive to be. He was humble, he expected no more than he expected from himself and I'm sorry for his loss and his family's loss. Public comments and non-agenda items, we're going to limit to three minutes per person. The public is invited to address the council on any item of business not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Note to citizens, citizens have the right and are encouraged to speak during public comment regarding items not on the agenda or regarding an item that in time which does appear on the agenda. All comments and questions during public comment or on agenda item are limited to not more than three minutes per speaker, except that the Chair may grant an additional three minutes at their discretion. Any person who has already addressed the council during public comments on agenda item during a public hearing will be asked to wait until the others have spoken before being recognized a second time. Additional comments are welcome at the second public comments period on the agenda. And you can call 469-708-0487, meeting ID 474-016590. And like I said before, please keep these positive, these comments, you know, if there's a personnel matter, we cannot respond to you about personnel matters. And I, you know, I'd like it to keep as positive possible. And, you know, it's probably best if it's something, a serious allegation or something like that, it's best if we, if we receive an email. But, you know, if there's anybody that would like to get up and speak, please now do so.
Lacy Antonson, I live on Lake Avenue. So in 2016, the same town council said we could start the festival and so we did nine years ago. And tomorrow, no, Saturday, is the festival. We're looking for about six more volunteers and I want to thank so many people in this room and in the town who are already volunteering on their committees or have family members with a craft booth, so thank you for those that are already coming. But there might be a few of you that are just coming to enjoy the day and if you could volunteer, that'd be great. We have a few volunteer t-shirts left if you're ready to sign up. And you could email us at blueberryfestival@graymain.org for more information. We have a Facebook page and a website too. And it's going to be a great day, so can't wait. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Tracy Greenwood, Divitt Drive. Welcome to the new town council members. Congratulations. I have heard some rumblings and I'm sure that other people can attest about, I know this is a federal issue, but with the lack of mail delivery of recent, and I heard some grumblings that there was to be a representative coming to the post office from DC to address this. I don't know if anyone's heard of this or I'm sure that we've all been impacted by the lack of mail recently, a couple days where we didn't get mail for a week. So I just wanted to kind of float that out there and see if there was anything that you all knew.
Well, I toe for the turn, for the post office and it's pretty much just as everybody else, they just don't have enough staff.
No staff, yeah.
And the vehicles break down constantly, so they're doing the best they can.
Right.
But it's just a lack of staff.
So perhaps somebody from DC.
You should do what I do is I go in and I get my mail. Just walk in and they'll give you your mail if you haven't gotten it in a couple days.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Murray, 213 Shaker Road. I'm one of the trustees of the Gray Water District. I have a budget comment, I hope that's appropriate to this forum. I would like to ask the council to reconsider putting the project to, for the Public Works Tank back into the budget. That tank represents, there's 10,000 gallons of gas and diesel in the Wellhead District buried underground in a tank that's approximately 50 years old. I understand that it's been tested, the Public Works crew does a great job, they monitor the heck out of it, and it's been tested and I believe the tests, I trust that they were done properly and that the tank does have another three to five years in it, but what's the point? Why would you wait? It's not going to get any better, it's going to be more expensive next year, it's going to be more expensive the following year, and if you have a leak there, it's going to be a hell of a lot more expensive, believe me. So I think you should consider that, take a look at some of the other things you have in the budget. There may be a place which you can find that is less, I guess, a threat to the drinking water, where you may be able to find the money to replace that tank. Thank you.
Hi, Judy Seminow, Gray. And I just wanted to say thank you for the new town council. I am so impressed with that budget cut, I can't tell you, it's like, wow, you're talking about almost a million dollars cutoff. I appreciate all the people that went out and voted and voted the budget down. That's a million dollar savings on our budget, that's incredible. And I know a lot of hard work went into it, that's why a lot of us turned the budget down, is because we wanted those adjustments. We didn't want high, high taxes and I wish the school had done better, you know, you're looking at a $35 million budget for the school and they knocked a measly 370 off. When we've got a town budget of what, 13 to 14 million and they knocked off almost a million, that's pretty impressive. So I want to say kudos to you guys because that it really is very impressive. And I would stay hard on those cuts because I think, I think there's a lot of leftover money in the budget. It seems like nobody knows that number. It's like, okay, what was left over this year? A million and a half again this year? I mean, what is the number? It's always seems to be like a, like a ghost number. So, and I almost, I believe too that the salaries, the people that got the salaries, 15% last year, 20% last year, should get zero this year. And I think that should happen and not get a raise this year. Some people are being overpaid. That's what brought taxpayers to the polls, was they saw the salaries and they felt they were very high and that people didn't get them on skill and everything, they got them on basically cherry picked. And I think it's unfair. I think people that got large raises last year shouldn't get any this year. And maybe those go to the people that didn't get what they should have got. I think Randy Cookson should have got his raise. I think he should have got his 15% raise. And I feel bad that Randy's leaving early, earlier than he had planned to leave because of stress issues and health issues and things like that. So I hope the transfer station doesn't fall apart. I hope we don't get EcoMaine. I hope we don't get trash pickup. I hope he doesn't get fired early. I hope he stays on as long as his termination says he does and that he can finish the rest of his term on his terms and not somebody else's. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Fogg, 127 Shake Road. Not to be negative, but I'm positive that it would have been nice to have a paper agenda when I walked in the door, not having a laptop or having printed one out before I came. I don't know that eight or 10 pieces of paper are going to break the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I next?
Hi, I'm Freeman Rowe from Gray, 23 Lewiston.
Hi, I'm Freeman Rowe from Gray 23 Lewiston Road. Couple of questions about the budget. Have we hired somebody at the transfer station? If so, are we paying for two directors' salaries at this time until October? And was that included in the budget? Second of all, on the library, I think I heard, and I could be corrected, but I thought I heard that it said that we're limited to about 15 books to borrow through that networking system that we have. That's the case? And we're paying?
That's not the case.
Per person.
Per person? Oh, okay.
You can order 15 at a time.
15?
Just at a time, one file at a time, and then you can get more as soon as those folds come in. There's no limit.
No limit. Well, I'm glad that got cleared up because that was, wow. All right. Thank you for that. And, okay, so then, what we got into the TIF, we spent an awful lot tonight talking about the TIF. And I have a question about the rebranding. Is that being included in the TIF money? And, no, for the, is that whole new position all been filled or will be filled? And it's going to be used for TIF money? I guess that's the way to put it. And with the discussion regarding the TIF, the reason why there's leftover money is that the businesses had contracts with the citizens of Town of Gray when they wanted their TIFs. And they were supposed to do certain things, and it would have paid. The money would have paid to do those things that they had promised, the business people had promised that they would do. And of course, they fell off. They did not do what they promised to do. And there was two different TIFs. And so I was, in my own mind, I was kind of against that extending the TIF because of that reason. But after listening to tonight, I'm thinking that extending the TIFs would probably pay for that rezoning. So if we're over here now, and it's in one year or so, one or two years, so if we're over here looking to take money out of the budget, current budget, for this rezoning and studies and all that stuff, why can't we wait until, if the TIFs get extended? That's what the citizens want, of course. That's their decision, our decision. So if that's the case, then you should think about that. So I guess my mind did get opened up for that particular thing. And, oh, yeah, on the bond.
Brett.
What is it? Three minutes?
Yeah, you're up.
Oh, shoot. All right. I'll come back.
Thank you.
There was one more thing on the bond, but I'll be back.
All right.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lena Gilmore. I live on Portland Road. I want to thank Michael for doing this TIF videos you're going to do. I really like the idea of TIF for dumbies, and I think it'll be really great if we learn and understand it a lot better. I always wondered about adding the Friday hours. If people can't, the understanding was people can't make it because we don't have enough hours here at town hall. And I'm thinking if you can't make it Monday through Thursday on the hours we have, I don't know how opening Friday morning is going to help. You know, we want to do later if people are working. But if you can't do the mornings all week, I don't know how you can do it on Friday. One Saturday a month, later hours? I mean, if you're trying to accommodate people who can't do 9:00 to 5:00 stuff, I don't see how a couple more hours on Friday morning is going to make a difference. I heard someone say that we all have to give a little, and I agree, but it feels like the town employees are having to give a lot more than most of us. Last time I was here, y'all talked about the pension plan. Is that not going to happen at all? I don't understand what's...
Not the main PERS, yeah.
They have a retirement plan, but not the main PERS.
They have a retirement?
They have a retirement plan, but not the main PERS.
Oh, okay. So the PERS plan, okay. All I know is I'm retired and I wouldn't be able to stand up here if I didn't have my pension. So is the PERS, like, off the table now?
Yes.
And I understand that you're cutting the general assistance program?
You can't cut that.
Can't cut that?
No.
You're just cutting the employee's pay or hours or what's?
We're not going to discuss someone's pay.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alvalisteros. I live at 30 Toton Road. I just wanted to say Chairman Johnson, you had a very nice speech about Randy. The reality is for a year and a half, we've been hearing a lot about stress for him, and I don't think it's fair to let him go as if it's a personal decision. Your nice pitch, it's nice, but it's doing a disservice to the town if it's not addressing the real reasons why he is leaving. And people have been hearing and talking about that for a long time. And Council on Gas, you were mentioning before about the people voted in 2020 to do certain things. It's nice that you remember what people voted in 2020, but in 2025, they also voted. They voted to elect councilors that would reduce the budget because people are tired of being overtaxed. And there's been a lot of speech about every dollar that we reduce or that we cut will have an impact. You've been saying it many times. But the town manager has said that for years, we have been overtaxed. So we would like also to see what's the impact of every dollar of overtaxing for a long time. Who took the decisions that allowed the overtaxing? Because for every year that we overtaxed and residents of Gray had to sell their house because they couldn't make payment for the new taxes that have been increased, that has an impact also. So please, let's be serious. If we're going to be analyzing about the cuts, let's analyze as well about the overtaxing. We would like to know for how long we've been overtaxed, for which amount, and what are the implications of that overtaxing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to, let's see, there is no old business, so we're going to get, we've got new business. So we need to do the Waste Management of Maine application for license, order 2526-2. Be ordered that the Gray Town Council hereby approves the refuse haulers' applications for license for waste management in Maine. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do we open it up for discussion?
I'm going to need a motion and a second.
Yep. Do we have a motion to accept the license?
So moved.
Second. Second. And, yeah, is there any questions, comments?
No.
All right. No questions from you guys. Any questions, comments about this application?
I just think we usually do that, do we?
That's right.
You're supposed to take public comment on any action. I love the comment.
All right, I'm just going to move it to a vote. Do we have a, we can just move to a vote, right?
All right.
Yep. So, Anne?
Yes.
Charity, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right. Moving on. The next one is, let me get here real quick. All right, so the next one is the Triano Waste Services, Inc., application for license, order number 2526-3. Be ordered that the Gray Town Council hereby approves the refuse haulers' applications for license for the Triano Waste Services, Inc. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Open it up for discussion on the board first? Anybody from public want to make any comments about the Triano? All right, I'm just going to go to a vote then.
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right. And let's see, I get through these applications. Next one is, all right, so Mike, let's do the notice of election for MSAD. Okay. So the next one is resolve 2526-6. It's the counter signing the notice of election for MSAD 15. Be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby counter signs the notice of election calling Maine School District Administration District Number 15 District Referendum to be held at the Newbegin Hall on 22 Main Street in the Town of Gray on Tuesday, August 26, 2025 for the purposes of determining the questions attached. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Let me scroll down here. Now, do I need to read this whole thing or not?
No, just, that's it.
All right, that's it.
So someone just needs to move and second.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Comments? Anybody from the public?
Just need to correct the spelling on Newbegin and the...
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Sorry, we missed that.
Yep. New begging? Yes. All right. All right, with no questions, I'm just going to go to a vote. It's on the other end. Ken?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
And Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right, so moved. All right. I like my paper. Let's see here. And now we're on to board and committee reappointments. All right. So it's resolve 2526-7. Be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby reappoints the individuals listed below as regular members of the respective board or committees with a term expired on August 31, 2028. Dakota Edmiston at the Board of Assessment Review, Sherri Baker-Huey at the Dry Mill Schoolhouse Committee, Kathy Janelle, Library Trustee, Karen Marshon, Library Trustee, Derek Shirley, the Ordinance Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, Wayne Wood, the Ordinance Advisory Committee, Al Schaefer, the Open Space Committee, Dan Cobb, the Planning Board, and Lisa Gilmore on the Wild Blueberry Festival. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, let's open it up for discussion. Before we open up to the public, does anybody on the board have any questions? All right, public. Does anybody from public have any questions or comments about any of these appointments?
Here we go. Too much golf with Paul Vila. Brad Fogg, 127 Shaker Road. I've come to speak for the reappointment of Derek Shirley. This would be his second reappointment. He started a first term short. He had a full three years recently. He is now applying for his third appointment, so this will be his, starting with year four, five, and six. He has grown in this job immensely over the past three years. And he is also a representative of a youth movement, if you will, growing youthful population in the Town of Gray. He is knowledgeable of legislative actions as he monitors activities in the legislature quite well. And he's also attended two of the Maine Municipal Association trainings on zoning board and planning boards. He's, again, I just have to say, he's grown in the job. Sometimes he has been confrontational with the public, but this is also in return for highly aggressive actions that have been taken by public or applicants that we've dealt with. And some of you know there have been some very arduous zoning boards in the past two years. So I stand here in support of his reappointment to Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will just say, I did do, I did get a couple calls about Mr. Shirley with some concern. I also did some research. And the research that I've done is that the people that have worked with him feel that he has matured significantly over the last few years. He's taken the job seriously and spent the time that he should be spending doing the research to be better on this board. So, you know, with that said, I, you know, I feel comfortable. You know, I hope Derek appreciates the fact that you get up and speak for him. And, you know, and I think that has a lot to say. Does anybody else have any? All right, if nobody else has any issues, then let's just move it to a vote, and I'll start again over here.
Yes.
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 Yes, we're voting on all reappointments.
All right, I guess that's the way we do them. Okay. All right, and I'm a yes as well. And I also want to say that, you know, anybody that's watching, anybody here in the audience, this takes up a lot of people's times, personal times. And, you know, we have a lot of people that complain and send us emails, but they don't step up. And I really appreciate the fact that these individuals have taken the time to, you know, to engage with the community, to learn more, and hopefully help grow this community because, you know, each one of these boards, you know, are important. We wouldn't have them if they weren't. So I just wanted to thank all the individuals that are getting reappointed and also that run the boards today. And let's see, Mike, is there anything else?
There's some more appointments.
Oh, there are some more? Okay. All right, so let's see here. So, all right, so that to Lena. All right, so resolve 2526-8, appointing Lena Reichart to the Board of Assessment Review. And let me find that. I like my paper. I'm just going to say that one more time, Brett. Mike, do you know what page that's on?
I know. I like where Brett stands up. This is good.
If you click, if you, oh, you're not on the...
Oh, if I click, oh, I go...
On the web-based version, you can click right on.
Oh, right.
Upon it.
Okay. All right. And I have no other web-based version, I guess. All right, so if I just clicked on, you know what page that's on? I could go down by page if you click on and tell me.
Did someone pack a page 89?
89, okay. All I need is really the pages that, let's see here. 88, okay. All right, I'm almost, yeah. Mine's 89. Okay. All right, cool. So appointing Lena Reichart to the Board of Assessment Review, resolve 2526-8. Be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby appoint Lena Reichart as a regular member of the Board of Assessment Review with a term expiring on August 31, 2027. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Move a second?
Second.
All right, now, open it up for board discussion. Anybody on the board have any questions or concerns?
No concerns at all. I mean, Lena's been volunteering for many years now and has done a great job, as far as I know. And I just, I do want to take the time to appreciate all the other volunteers we just approved to the various boards and committees. We couldn't do it without you. And I, quite a number of them are back for their, you know, second or third round of being appointed, so just really appreciate their work.
Anybody in the public have any comments?
Brad Fogg, again. Lena Reichart, long, long time employee in the planning office, the code enforcement office. She left for another job. She's moved back into Gray. She was on the Zoning Board of Appeals when I first, she became a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I mean, she is great with people. She's great with... I mean, she is great with people, she's great looking at the entire outlook of things, she has a good understanding of the ordinances of the zoning and things like that, and the value of people's homes, so I think this would be a great appointment for the town. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else? Can we move to a vote then? I will go to my left now. Anne?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, approved. All right, so the next one is on packet page. All right, so the next one, we are at Resolve 2526-10, Appointing Judy Semino to the Fin...
9.
Oh, there's one, I missed one, all right. No, you're good.
Is there?
Which one's that one?
Michelle.
Michelle Gerard.
What page is that on?
It's 2526-9.
All right, now, it needs a page number.
Page 80, 94.
94, okay, sorry about that.
94, yep.
All right, so Resolve 2526-9, Appointing Michelle Gerard to the Dry Mill Schoolhouse Committee. Be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby appoints Michelle Gerard as a regular member of the Dry Mill Schoolhouse Committee with a term expiring on August 31, 2028. First and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Ken?
Second.
All right.
Move.
Let's see, let's open up. Anybody have any thoughts or questions? Anybody in the public? All right, I'm just gonna go, does anybody have objection to unanimous consent? So moved. All right, now to Judy, 2526-1. Appointing Judy Semino to the Finance Committee. Be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby appoints Judy Semino as a regular member of the Finance Committee with a term expiring on August 31, 2028. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Charity?
Second.
Second, Vince? And now, open it up. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
No, I'd like to thank Judy for applying for this. I think she's gonna be a great addition to the town. She does finance for a living, and she is very good at budgets, and she'll be a great attribute to this town. Thank you.
And I'd like to, I'd like to second that having somebody of her expertise is kind of a gift for the town. She's been doing it for a couple decades, and to have somebody with her finance experience is gonna be great, so, thank you.
Judy, do you wanna get up and say something?
Okay.
Does anybody else in the audience wanna say anything?
Well, I will say thank you. I will say thank you for everything.
Come on up, just so they can hear. I'm sorry.
I just wanna say thank you for the kind words, and I will truly do a good job. I love finances. The financial world has been so passionate for me. I am totally, I am in love with it, which is great for folks that don't like it. So I will do a great job. I promise that I will do my best and serve you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go to a vote. Vince?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Anne?
No.
Mike, yes. Approved. All right, so the next one is Order 2526-4, Fiscal Year 26 Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles. Be ordered that the Gray Town Council hereby approves the Fiscal Year 26 Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles as presented. This is the first and final reading, August 5, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments?
So, go ahead, Mike.
So this is where we're not gonna vote on this today, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Chair, if I may just advise, so where we had the advertised public hearing, the appropriate thing to do would be to, if, you know, the council's happy to discuss the warrants, but the appropriate thing to do would be to open up the public hearing for folks to come and speak, and then you can, the council can decide to table the item to a meeting, a future meeting. I think we, consensus was August 19.
Okay, all right, so do we even need to open it up, or can we just?
Yeah, you have to have a public hearing.
Right now?
Yes. So you just, so open up the public to be able to comment on the warrants.
Okay, let's open up to the public if anybody has any, any comments on the warrants.
Should we go by the articles and just read them? We get free for all?
Yeah, because we're, yeah, let's just let them get up and say what they want. If this over...
Please, what he just say, really.
All right, for now, once you get good.
We got a motion and a second on that either way, should...
Yeah.
Vote that down.
We're having a public hearing.
We have to have a public hearing.
We're in discussion on that motion.
Yeah.
So I had sent the council a lengthy letter of suggestion and all that comment, and then I was quite surprised to see that the full amount of the TIF money is in the warrant article. And did you even consider any of that? Any of my, have any? No one contacted me for any additional information or where did I get my stuff or anything like that. I mean, I was providing some good positive stuff, and I didn't get any response back. So I gotta say, I'm very disappointed that you are proceeding with the $200,000 and I explained all the reasons why you shouldn't be going, and it should be either zero or a dollar. And I just wanted to share my frustration and how upset I am about this situation. So I opened up my ears tonight. I'm hoping that you'll open your ears and be ready for the next meeting to do some serious look at, and contact me anytime you want about that information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Howdy, Sam Feifel Gray, over in West Gray. So I would encourage you to support the motion as presented. I think the warrant articles prepared by administrative staff are appropriate response to the budget being voted down, and I think the extensive further cuts as discussed in the meeting today go beyond what is necessary. And I think, you know, people don't know, I've been on the school board for 10 years, and it's, you know, it's a problem, right? If we are going to continue to fund our town and our schools through a primarily residential tax base, we are going to be here over and over again having the same discussion, right? There is two ways to address this problem. We convened a comprehensive plan committee in 2020. They did great work. We have a plan to go forward, but we need to fund that plan, right? We need to encourage further commercial development in the village, and to do that, we need those funds for professional services, for the rezoning, right? We are gonna find ourselves stuck in the mud. Our costs are not going to go down, right? Our school board, health insurance went up 13% this year, right? You are gonna have similar problems at the town. There is no way to flat budget. We're gonna just see an erosion in services. We need to find a way to generate more revenue. The way that we generate more revenue is by encouraging a commercial tax base. Commercial development requires some investment by the town. We need to make sure that, I mean, I just got back from a trip out west. You go to places in Ohio and Colorado, they have bespoke developments with retail on the bottom, residential on top. They have walkable towns and cities. We are an old New England town, and we need to figure out a way to modernize, to address those costs. If we continue to cut our budget down to the bare bones, we are just not going to have the resources necessary to grow and go forward and try to find a solution to these property taxes. Nobody wants the property taxes to continue going up, but the, there is more than one way to address that problem. If we just continue to cut and cut and cut, we're gonna find ourselves with a town that nobody wants to be in, nobody wants to invest in, and we're gonna have, you know, what's at the end of that. So I would encourage you to go forward with what's been presented by the town administrators. I think the warrants as presented makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? So do we now just...
So now you can take a motion to table it.
Do I have a motion to table?
August 19.
To August 19?
Yes, first.
Second?
Second.
Ian?
No.
Charity?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, to table.
I'm a yes as well. All right, so, all right, so we're gonna now go to public comments. I'm not gonna read it, 'cause you guys already know. So if you guys wanna step up, anybody that wants to give public comments on non-adjunct Okay, then we're going to go to current council...
Hold on one second.
All right, so, I didn't know you were getting up.
Oh, I got a chance then to ask my other question. That 2017-18 bond that you were talking about that was used for, you know, all kinds of stuff, and it was very confused, and I guess, and I had sat down with the town manager trying to go through locating what that money was being spent for, being used for at that time. And I think it was concluded that a lot of that money was not used for its intended purposes when we got the bond out. And there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff in there. So I'm thinking I heard tonight, again, I could be wrong, that you, that bond is still in service, we haven't paid it off. And if that's the case, we just bought an R and R, one of those great big machines for the transfer station, you know, the dumpster thing there. We just bought that with regular tax dollars out of the budget, as far as I understand. Could someone investigate that? Because if we're paying interest on a bond and didn't spend it, the money, and we're now buying stuff that should have been bought with that bond money, but nobody, I don't know if anyone can find it or not, but right now, all I know is that we bought stuff that was supposed to be used, the bond was supposed to be used for, and did not do it. So can someone investigate that? Because that's a double whammy for the taxpayers. So when you talk about cuts, these are things that are not called cuts. These are things that, you know, have taken advantage of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we're gonna move on to referrals. There are none tonight, so the current council referrals include below a list of the items previously referred to the Town Council for Workshop Review. These items are included in Agenda for Reference Only, which is the Comprehensive Plan Rezoning, the Create Water Quality, the Shoreland Ordinance, the Pop-Up Business Ordinance, Update Public Safety Ordinance, and the Village Transformation Project. We have some upcoming meetings, the next Town Council meeting, well, you know, I'm gonna add that 'cause it's not in here. My next Town Council workshop is gonna be at 5:30 on August 19, and...
Town Council meeting after.
There'll be a Town Council meeting at 7:00 PM after that, and then one on September 2 at 5:30 at workshop, same meeting at 7:00 PM. Retreat is on September 16, 2025 right now, and then we have another meeting on October 7, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We are now going to go into an executive session for the Gray Town Council entering to the executive session under MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, to discuss pending litigation and legal rights and duties. And then there will be a second, a second one. We're gonna make separate motion for both of you, the second should be discussed. Okay, so we're gonna go into a second executive session, and I don't know the exact wording, because...
It's on, it's on, nothing.
No, he told me not to do that, so. All right, I'll, I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting.
We'll let you...
Yeah, no, I'm about, I'm about to do that, but...
If legal councils provided you something different than legal councils here and can...
Yeah, Ben, can you speak to what you would like me to do for both of them?
The only topic of the executive session will be the Town Council's legal rights and responsibilities as it regards pending litigation and contractual matters. There will not be any discussion of employment matters.
Okay.
So the motion, the motion should, should only follow the first executive session model, the motion that's laid out as the first item under the executive session section of your agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Good.
All in favor? Adjourned.